The May 2 meeting of the Daily City Planning Commission. I would like you to invite all of you to stand with me and pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call?
Tallarico.
Present.
Di Giovanni.
Present.
Das Magwal.
Here.
Satori.
Here.
Crump.
Present. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of March 7, 2017? That hearing done, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Can we, Mr. Chairman, can we have, please give us five minutes to read this? Five minutes. That's not debatable under the parliamentary procedure.
Through the chair, we could continue this and just take up the minutes after the public hearing if the commissioners so desire.
Okay, let's do it then. Moving right along to the public hearing. We have one item before us tonight. Point Martin II Residential Subdivision General Plan Amendment GPA 91612295. Plan Development PD 101511781. Major Subdivision Sub 91612296. And Environmental Review SEQA 101511782. Michael.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is the Point Martin II Residential Subdivision. It's a general plan amendment, plan development zoning, major subdivision, and an environmental review, all rolled into one, for the subdivision of some lots on Carter Street, resubdivision of some lots on Carter Street into 117 residential lots on which single-family homes will be constructed. The project site is located again on Carter Street here. The is the project boundary. Saddleback Condominiums is located generally to the north of the project site with the Summit Ridge subdivision generally south and Oak Ridge Drive up slope from the project site, part of the Southern Hills neighborhood here. The Cow Palace is located generally, it's Cow Palace parking lot off to the lower right in the screen, just to provide some context. The project is made up of a general plan amendment to rectify the boundaries between the residential low-density and open space preservation designations that were adopted as part of the general plan future land use map in 2013. So the site prior to 2013 was designated for retail and office commercial, and in 2013 the Planning Commission and City Council changed the designation to residential low-density. So the site actually largely already has the density allowance that permits the residential lots, but there are some boundary adjustments that need to be made. After, if approved, the boundaries between the open space preservation and the residential low-density designations would be coterminous with the subdivision map boundaries where development is allowed. Secondly, a rezoning is required for the subdivision. The current zoning is pre-plan development, and the applicant has proposed to rezone to plan development, which would be number 70, so PD 70 is what this would be called. It allows lot sizes and building allowances that would exceed those otherwise permitted in the R1 single-family zone. So plan development zoning is necessary to allow this development pattern to go forward. The project is constituted by a 117-lot subdivision on an 8.3-acre site. There are 48 existing lots that underlie the existing boundaries of the subdivision with 29 different property owners. So the applicant has undertaken quite an effort to get all the 29 property owners together and agree to a development pattern. It's been a fairly complicated process that's taken quite some time. Some of the planning commissioners who were on the Planning Commission a couple, or a year ago, last February, may recall this item came to the Planning Commission and City Council as a preliminary plan. So we'll go over the process in a moment, but this isn't the first time some of you may be seeing this. So the resulting density of this development concept is 14.1 dwellings to the acre. The general plan allows between 2 and 14.5, so it's definitely at the upper range of what's allowed, but within what is allowed. There are 9.7 acres of open space that would remain. Those would be owned and maintained by the homeowners. So we presented a similar slide in, this slide out. Development zoning. A preliminary sketch plan, and that came to the Planning Commission, at which time both those bodies approved in concept the land was proposing. The general plan in the land use element, you 23 required, and still does require that the applicant develop a master land use plan. So this is sort of an outgrowth of a longstanding desire of the planning staff that the development of this hillside occur altogether in a cohesive sort of development pattern. Given the number of different properties and different property owners, we put a policy in the Planning Commission and City Council approved it requiring that, and the applicant prepared that master land use plan, and that was also approved in February 2016. And it is basically identical to the subdivision map before the Planning Commission tonight. So tonight, the Planning Commission is considering the precise plan, which is, again, the plan development zoning request. Associated with that is the mitigated negative declaration that would also need to be certified by the Planning Commission and the City Council. Remaining steps, again, are the certification of the mitigated negative declaration, the SEQA document that is, approval of the general plan amendment, plan development zoning, approval of the subdivision map. The fourth item, we've underlined, just to be clear, the applicant is not requesting tonight approval of the architecture, landscape, or community design plan elements of this development. The Daily City Municipal Code allows the applicant to obtain from the design review committee at a later time when the builder, for example, is known and they bring their product to the site, a design review, approval of the actual houses at a later time. Also, again, with that is the landscaping, community design plan elements. So the specific details of wall design, streetlight design, things like this would be reviewed, again, by a council committee essentially, a design review committee. So this map shows the existing lot configuration. Again, 49 lots, 29 different property owners. This to orient the planning commissioners, Steve Quarterway, this is Carter Street here. And as you can see, these are the existing lots. So these lots would be replaced by the tentative subdivision map if it was approved. Here is a site photo. This is a little bit from a while back, but this provides the general idea here. This is standing in Carter Street. As the planning commission, see, there's a full sidewalk improvement that's already put in place at this location, overhead utility lines, which would be undergrounded as part of the project. And the project's characterized by gently rolling pasture land proceeding up slope from Carter Street up to the Saddleback condominium development and at more steeper portions of the site up toward the Oak Ridge Drive homes. But the site actually ends in this area. A lot of what's down slope from these homes here is actually part of their lot. This is looking toward the Summit Ridge subdivision, I believe, Steve Quarterway off to the right. This is the Saddleback condominium development to the north. So this slide shows the actual tentative subdivision map that the Planning Commission would be making a recommendation to the City Council on. The map again shows 117 lots. We're going to provide a zoom in of this, so don't worry about that. Open space preservation here. The subdivision provides a looped street configuration that provides access to lots ranging from about 1,200 to 2,400 square feet in size in two distinct neighborhoods. Primary access points would be from Carter Street, approximately 150 feet south of Saddleback Drive, that's the entrance to Saddleback Condominiums. All of the six lots would be served by two traditional streets, Streets A and B, and four narrower lanes. The Carter Street would be improved to incorporate a left turn pocket into the subdivision from the northbound direction. So we'll go over that here. So just starting with these six lots, that would be provided access off of Steve Quarterway. Those are located here. And the main access, again, is off of Carter Street here into the subdivision. There would be a left-hand turn pocket installed by the developer here. There's a secondary access from Steve Quarterway that would be provided here. This is the Summit Ridge subdivision in this area, down where the pointer is. Point Martin I subdivision is located here. This was our, this is an approved subdivision that is not part of this subdivision, but the street improvement of Street A would need to occur either with the construction of Point Martin I, or if Point Martin II was to be constructed first, that would need to be, that would need to be constructed prior to construction on these lots. So that's something important to note because it looks like the street here is off-site, and that's something that we've conditioned in the conditions of approval. So I mentioned that there are two different lotting patterns, and essentially there are traditional lots that are basically where the mouse is here, which are served by private streets, A and B. So that's sort of neighborhood one, those are lots 1 through 67, and then lots 68 through lots 117 are smaller in configuration, and those are served by the lanes, Lane A, B, C, and D. The lanes here are much narrower than the streets, and again, these are all private streets. The lane configurations are 20 feet wide, and so just provide enough room for vehicles to pass by each other. But the homes that would be constructed are actually served by pedestrian passeos that are located essentially in the middle of the, just to provide an example, in the middle of where the two lot ends come together opposite the vehicular lanes that serve them, so here. And then there are also passeos that are located here, and these are more clear on the grading plan that we'll take a look at in a moment. So there's, again, some distinction in the different types of lotting that are proposed in the subdivision. Streets A and B, again, are private streets. There is, I believe, a 32-foot curb-to-curb dimension. Parking's provided on one side of the street for most of the dimension of Street A and B. The dimension also, the full width of the improvement does allow for a separated sidewalk also at these streets A and B. So that's something that would be constructed as part of the subdivision, and is a nice element to allowing for a better pedestrian flow within the subdivision and improving the pedestrian experience. So that's an overview of the different types of lots that have been proposed. So this is the preliminary grading plan. It actually shows how homes would be configured upon the lots. And it also is the plan from which the planning staff developed the plan development zoning regulations. Shows the lot coverages of individual lots, which would be approximately up to 65 percent. And so the plan development standards that are provided as an attachment to the staff report reflect that. Also shown on this map are more details of the separated sidewalk along Street A, along Street B. And then as we move over to the grading plan on the north side of the subdivision where the smaller lot and the paseo development occurs, it's sort of, it's very hard to read on this, and I apologize for that, but the pedestrian passeos are located in between the lot ends here, pedestrian passeos here. This is all sidewalk, basically. When the person who lives in this house walks out of the front of their home, they would essentially arrive at a sidewalk and be able to access a sidewalk system that would lead them all the way down to Carter Street if they so desired. One of the conditions of approval that the planning staff has placed on this map is a, that the developer explore continuing a sidewalk. We noticed there was sidewalk missing here, and the applicant has his reasons for omitting a sidewalk there. Essentially, there was this desire to have a very lush landscape at the entrance, which is very, you know, a good thing, but we also need to balance that with providing some, maximizing pedestrian access to Carter Street. So this is essentially the grading plan, again, a bit hard to read, but showing the specifics on the sidewalk system onsite, stormwater treatment, these sorts of things that the Planning Commission would also be recommending approval to the City Council So the applicant has provided some conceptual architecture. When we bring a subdivision to the Planning Commission, sometimes the architecture is provided as a design review concurrent processing. This applicant has, again, elected to have the architecture be reviewed by the design review committee at a later point in time, but he did want to provide the Planning Commission and City Council with an overview of what the massing of the site is. Again, this is a very compact development pattern, as is shown on the screen. And part of the reason for this is that previous iterations of this subdivision, and the staff has been working on different development concepts on this. Years. Is something that. The heights of the. As identified. So we did want. There was just a. Homes as you drive up. Being there will mature. Do that massing. From Street A. Maybe this is one of the. This is. Every home has a two-car. A lot of. Again, we have a summary slide. Street view from. More immature state. Skate plan. And this, and will refine. But the. Elements, for example, pay. Says to the project. Paseo system. Access. Sort of the purple plant. That. West side of. More detail. Actually, this does. System of the. I'm not sure which is, but does show. From the alley. Our alley load. Residents. Onto a sidewalk system. This is the. Or at the. In the. Section. Using this development pattern capable of engrading by providing. In the, the smaller lot. So as I indicated, we have an. Attached homes, which provide a two-car garage. 67 of 117 homes would actually. 268 parking. 50 of all row-type homes. Assessed by lanes A, B, C. Car garage, 34 of them would provide at least a one-car driveway for 134 spaces. 402 off-street parking spaces in the subdivision. As I'd mentioned, Streets. And eight-foot. Shoulder. From that, we would gain 41 on-street. Division would provide a total. Planning. Like other departments. Conditions of approval. An advancement to the City Council, including the requirement. Tainting well-designed decor throughout the subdivision, I believe. The subdivisions. Area of streetlights. Streets were able to gain the ability to have more decorative-type features like pedestrian separated. Street B, as it indicated, condition of approval that the. Pedestrian paseo. Sidewalk, rather, that connect. The sidewalk. Bill is important. Completing the. The project, of course, is. Cities Affordable Housing. The ordinance. Of all ownership dwellings. And affordable to households. 120 million income for the county. The applicant has approved. Proposed, and the city manager has approved. That. What different from the. Manual approval. And the plan that's approved for the subdivision. Affordable units within the project, and the. Impact fee of a point, $1.8 million. The exact fee calculation is done at the time that the building permits are pulled. It's based on the square feet, so that's just an estimate at this time. The project has undergone a thorough environmental review. The planning commissioners have in their packet just the initial study. The initial study with the attachments is actually this document. We didn't print every planning commissioner, every single, it was included on the online version. It's over 600 pages. So there's a number of appendices, and we're able to answer any questions about anything in the appendices. The environmental document did identify environmental impacts, not deemed significant, stickable, meaning that mitigating can be adopted. Planning Commission and City Council to allow the project to be under a mitigated negative declaration as the appropriate level of environmental review under SEQA. The environmental impact. Quality, biological resources, cultural resources. Hazardous hazards and hazardous materials. We've prepared a slide just for traffic. Is something that does warrant additional discussion. But essentially, the traffic study prepared for the project studied existing, future, and cumulative conditions at six area intersections. I won't read every single one of them, but they're essentially the big intersections in that area. Analysis determined that the proposed project would generate approximately 1,000 new vehicle trips every day, and that all of the intersections with those trips added into the intersection existing service levels would continue to operate at a level of service C or better during the weekday peak traffic hours. The city's general plan standard is a level of service D, so C is better than D, and so there were no mitigation measures that were required of this project. That is not to say, however, that the applicant won't pay AB 1,600 fee impacts. So every home, based on the number of square feet in the home, will pay into a community pool of money that can be used throughout the city to implement traffic improvement projects. So the city already has a fee mechanism in place that the applicant would pay into, and that would be, again, collected at the time of building permit. The staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions, adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report, recommend the City Council approve the mitigated negative declaration that we discussed, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program that accompany the initial study, and recommend that the City Council approve the general plan amendment, the rezoning to plan development, and the major subdivision, all subject to the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. If there are any questions, the staff is, of course, able to answer those, as well as the applicant is also here tonight to answer any questions, and I believe there may be some consultants that he's brought with him.
Thank you, Michael. At this time, before we ask any questions, I'd like to invite the applicant up to make any remarks he would like to make. Mr. Bowman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Crump. I didn't have anything particularly prepared specially for this. I just wanted to make you guys aware that we do have most of our consultants here present. So if you guys should have questions regarding traffic, we have Richard Hopper, who is a former city traffic engineer for several cities in the North Peninsula, and also is contracted with the city to provide some traffic engineering services. We also have our geologist here, the senior geologist with NGO, one of the premier growing California geology companies, and also our civil engineer, who is RJ A Civil, who has provided engineering, civil engineering services for several subdivisions recently in Daily City, is very familiar with civil engineering matters. I also, we also, we didn't have our biologist present, he, rather long distance, but he has provided a document to the planning director to answer any particular questions. I would just say, if you're, answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Satori. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the planning here, when was the last time we have a comprehensive plan review, the general plan? When was the last time?
It was in 2013, the city.
You did not see that for development.
Now, this, the land use element was amended in 2013 to change the general plan designation to the residential designation in the density range that the applicant has proposed.
I'm asking this because we cannot be doing here on a piecebill basis, based on the, we are just reacting based on the application, because we have to have some sort of a general plan that is really, I would say, that have ambition to improve, develop the city. We cannot just relying on people who will apply now and then we just revise it. We have to be, we have to anticipate the problems. We have to anticipate the future development of the city. This city will not be a first-class city if this is what is happening now, you know, with political bickerings, political greediness, you know? So I don't think, we really have to anticipate this. So in case we are having, we have to have really a general comprehensive plan review of the past plan, because even in the general plan, I can see that there is no involvement in coastal commission, and yet I can see. So I don't think, we really have to anticipate this, so in case we are having, we have to have really a general comprehensive plan review of the past plan, because even in the general plan, I can see that there is no involvement in coastal commission, and yet I can see the map, we have, we have a facing Pacific Ocean, so that's my primary question. And second, that's it, another one, Mr. Chairman, is you mentioned you have a geologist here, right?
Correct, yes.
How is the soil there?
The soil has been recognized by the city for over thirty years, since the nineteen eighty-seven general plan that was drafted, that's exactly thirty years ago, was recognized as challenged in certain areas about the mid-to-upper slope areas, and that was one of the principal reasons why the, since the nineteen eighty-seven plan, there were mandates to attempt to develop, or to have the city try to attempt to develop the many parcel owners as one joint unit. That was unsuccessful, unfortunately, across many decades, many, many, many attempts.
I'm fully accorded with your project, but the point is, I'm thinking about, just like in Santa Monica.
Yes.
The soil erosion there is fantastic, terrific, it's going down, the soil is going down. If, this will not be seen by some of the expert geologists, even the experts sometimes, they differ from its interpretation, even lawyers, you know, doctors.
That's absolutely true.
So this we have to see.
I can address something specific to that, oftentimes, those types of Southern California failures that you see, there were shortcuts taken in many of them, they're not illegal, they were not even non-standards, but here's something that we're doing that's very distinct from that, is our geologists recommended an extremely conservative approach, and that is to take out the soil and to use a layman's expression, basically flop it. So it's going to stay on-site, but it gets, so it gets taken down to bedrock, so that there is no more soil that is even potentially, even during a very strong seismic event, that can loosen and liquefy, we all know what liquefy means. So what will happen is, that very same soil will stay on-site and will be re-engineered in layers, in layers typically a foot to two feet, to make it one cohesive unified mass. So what you've seen in Santa Barbara, Santa Monica, and many of these places, which you accurately point out, will not be taking place here because of that, it is a very, it's even appreciated by other geologists, it's an extremely conservative prescription, but this project has just been made feasible to be able to enact that.
Because if the builder is willing to inject cement up and down.
Grouding.
You have to do it, the buffer, and the same thing, otherwise the soil upstairs will go down, especially during rainy season, and this happened in, not only Santa Barbara, but in Southern California, it happened.
Yes.
That's why most of those who were blamed were the architects, engineers.
There were all kinds of alternative means and methods that were examined, they were less costly, some of them very ingenious, such as you're describing, and the one that we felt was going to incur the less potential for long-term liability, the, no potential of that is by doing a very old-fashioned, very costly, but very conservative method, and so the methods that you're describing were looked at, but ultimately, this was the one that we felt was safest, was for the very long term. This is not something that is just attempted, is attempting to get by on something of a more ingenious pattern, such as you're describing.
I'm citing this issue with, Mr. Chairman, because we cannot just say approve this, approve this, and then after twenty years, the problem comes in. We have to be more or less anticipatory on the possible problem, especially engineering. So that's my big question, I might be having some question later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You have any questions?
I wonder, I guess my whole thing is about the affordable housing, if it's twenty percent, then why isn't only just eleven homes out of the one-hundred-and-seventeen are going to be only affordable units? Leans to it, but knowing that. Like, I'm a renter, I want a viable home, I'm. If, like, for the renters.
Greater number of far below hundred to one-hundred-and-twenty thousand. Hundred-and-forty thousand. I'd like to make that much. Unfortunately. Have attempted to propose with. To do, everything you said. Down to fifty thousand. Since two years ago, it's called. And. In locate. Transit accessible. Stations where there's four. We've met with them, we. Attempting to. What you're so accurate. Your recommendations and. So to like that, because unfor- And we don't. Like to address which.
Through. For affordable housing. Process and procedure. Are required to be approved by the. The city council can weigh in on an. Manager has approved an affordable housing that was identified this evening, which includes. Of an in-lug fee. Uses those funds to. Of projects that reach. So. There was an interest. Units for a variety of. Believe it or not, the one-hundred-and-twenty percent income category is still difficult for those families to obtain homeownership status. So by providing the units on-site that integrates housing within a development that would otherwise be unattainable for those income levels, and then with the payment of a fee, the city can use that money to engage in projects with organizations such as Habitat for Humanity.
Mid-Penn or?
Mid-Penn, yes, in fact, the Mid-Penn project that was recently completed, you know, had city contribution, the city is contributing to a Habitat for Humanity project in the Bay Shore, so that's what those funds are made available for.
Thank you.
Anything further? Pam?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Beaumont.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for asking the affordability question, because what is affordable is, that word itself is. Yeah. We won't go there, we can go there, but we're not going there. I have a couple of things, if you don't mind, Mr. Beaumont, have you ever considered, like, in the area, because the density of it, to have, as they do, even though I know there's a density areas in Brisbane that are recent developments, to have some sort of common area to where they, where the, you have phase one neighborhood, and then you have this neighborhood two, to where, I don't know about the design element, I know we're not there yet, but just to suggest, in that particular area, is that where they have where families are able to take their children in that area, and possibly, I don't know if it's amenable for the, for you, is a bicycle path, so that people can have their children to get out to exercise, so, because, so we can make a move towards sustainability and a healthy community, but these are things that I just observed, and I would like to ask, are there any green building materials that you're using, or any energy efficiency patterns of the updated in your development that you're, that you're interested in using?
I'll address those, perhaps, in order that you presented them, with respect to bike path and amenities for the residents, and, for instance, walking paths, pedestrian paths, and so on, the community plan that Mike showed to you a little bit earlier ago has quite an extensive network of that.
Yeah.
The paseos are, they're not just sidewalks, they actually impart a very pleasant tree line, very, very shrubby type of appealing environment to access the homes, it's entirely private, not just the, those paseos, but the entire development is, and we work together with the city in arriving that, we had proposed originally that it be public, but owing to a variety of reasons, it was decided to make that private instead. But owing to that, that also gets to the bike lanes, we do and will have the ability to do that throughout the site, we're going to have a very low miles-per-hour designation, there can be things like traffic slumps to enable, you know, visitor guests to the, who don't live there, to, you know, be on guard not to go over ten-five miles an hour, there's all kinds of elements like that, that the HOA will put into place, and it's a very large project, it's long from north to south, and so there's a lot of ability to do those. As far as green building materials, yes, the California Building Code since two thousand, I don't quote me, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, now requires a very high degree of building elements in the structure for that to be used, and in addition to that, there's significant cost savings as well, so there's, that will be present extensively throughout the site, also in terms of, everything from E, certain types of E glass and windows, to roofing materials, to actually, actual composition of materials within the structure itself, I think your last item?
No, not really. There's more.
Is there more? I think that might have been it, I don't know, if you recall, I'm happy to.
Okay, then, and then just a couple of more, sorry to inundate you with these.
Not at all.
These things that came to my mind is the six-hundred pages, but as, as you know, in that area, where it's four-hundred feet, as the plan says, to, from our county park, and if there was anything that could be done to maybe not have a trail, but, but something to where people know there's recreation, and secondly, maybe make sure that there's native plants, and in the homeowners association, I see in the mitigation, it states, homeowners association shall be required to adopt vegetation management plan, and if so, could you change that to adopt a native vegetation management plan for the homeowners association? Given the sensitivity of our conservation plan, and we have the monarch butterfly, and things I read in the biological report, that, as you know, that can be impacted, because it's so close, only four-hundred feet is not very far.
Right.
So, and we want to make sure that the people, actually, it's a good point for you to have people move there, but at the same time, we want them to respect the area, maybe have knowledge that, that, you know, respect the native plants, and our butterflies, and things that, I'll probably have more later, but, and one more thing, and then, and then, let's see. Oh, according to the, as you know, for, it's my understanding from fire, that we currently only have, so the public knows, fifteen firefighters on duty for our whole city, now that the other part of Engine ninety-five has been shut down, so there's an increase of stress on if one engine goes out, as you know, versus another, and this would be applicable to, obviously, Engine firefighter, it would be ninety-three, correct?
Right.
In that area.
And Brisbane Fire, too, is part of NCFA.
So the density of it is, I understand, you know, that that's the way of the move of the, of some of the housing, but to consider that, and, because I don't know when that's going to be mitigated as well, but we want to make sure that people have access, and even our police at this time are understaffed at this time, so we want to put not much of a strain, but give the fifteen firefighters is not much for a city of a hundred thousand people, so please keep that in mind as you review your project, and if it's a little less, that would be great as well, to make a healthy community in your CCNRs, and that's all I have, oh, one more, physical analysis. It reads on page seven out of eighteen in the staff report, upon sale of residential properties, future owners will pay property tax to the county, and a portion is distributed to the city, would you happen to know what portion does Daly City get for each property?
That is actually rocket science. That's the best answer I can give you, there's an excellent report put out by.
I mean, we know the county, obviously, is the county going to take a bigger, a bigger portion of this?
That is an extraordinarily complex answer as to who, if you go to the county tax assessor, tax collector, it's a very, very complex answer, and I couldn't certainly provide that to you, even the experts disagree with them.
Maybe as it goes along, we can have some kind of idea.
A lot, by the way, is tied to what happened in nineteen seventy-eight with Prop thirteen, what happened is that certain counties and certain cities went in at one level, and others went in at another, and there's a great disjointed situation there, and even to the states.
Yeah, that's true.
Through the chair, oh. In terms of property tax, I mean, this is a very rough back-of-the-napkin kind of depiction here, but basically, the tax assessor, when the development is built, will assess taxes at one percent of the assessed value, and then the city generally gets twenty percent of what's collected on that, so that's just kind of a rough.
Yeah, that's what, just gives you an idea, at least we have some, you know, some idea, but I know the county, you know, benefits as well, so we're all in this together, so that's all I have for this particular time, thank you, Mr. Beaumont.
Sure, all I'll address is, there is, there is a Bay Shore parcel tax as well, there's two actual parcel taxes in that particular district, so the Bay Shore schools benefit from that. Going, I was through with trails, you mentioned trails perhaps accessing or behind the area, it's quite challenging, because the slopes are very steep.
Yeah.
And there's something that I'll bring back forward to the fire issue that you mentioned, in place there has been since nineteen ninety-three, I believe, a fire management special to that area, it's the Southern Hills Fire Management Plan, and it calls for continual annual abatement of all growth that is, that is there to, up to a certain level, as part of that, because the steeper slopes, they're concerned with cutting down on fuel to rise to Oak Ridge and those places, I speak, I've engaged with, well over a decade now, with the fire marshals, the fire prevention bureau staff.
Yeah.
Through many of their memberships over the years, and attempting to find a way that can help to lessen that, because they're, that's what they're concerned with, there was previous concerns with, from Steve Cordwell, there's still concerns are presently now, this will inhibit that to a great extent. Part of that is addressed by a long rear access trail, it's actually a maintenance trail, and it's to be used by two entities, one by the HOA Association, it looks like Mike's about to show you where it is, and that is, yeah, that one right there, so right here, you're good, all of this right here that you see, starting from here and accessing all through there, will be for two purposes, one for, at this juncture here, there's actually a P G and E pole, and P G and E wanted to keep that there, and so that is where it'll go underground from that point on, from this point forward, all the way to here, actually, that is going to be for the purposes of the HOA maintenance staff, which are retained landscape contractors to perform the weed abatement that's required. As you can see, these narrow tight lines here, even a footpath, and only a footpath, and when I'm talking about a one-foot-wide footpath is all that you can have there, we could have a twelve-foot, which is a standard wide path, pathway, traditionally, that's the sizes that most landscape architects like to have for cities, for counties, even for communities, the only way to do that would be with a very high retaining wall, with a complex system of gutters and drain sewers, also, it would precipitate erosion, this is very large, it goes way back up here, encompasses that area, and not only would that be challenging and costly, it would actually be a real maintenance, a problem, and potentially a future endangerment. So it's not likely, however, there is currently, right now, through Summit Ridge, access to part of that, but even Summit Ridge does not have access to the rest of the park network, which we all are familiar with, those of us who've explored Daly City, the network that exists right on the opposite side, unfortunately, that's a very steep hill, mountain, if you will, and there is no way to go wading through there, and the poison oak, the ticks, the shrubs, do that, but, you know, having an interpreter, I think a great, there's two great ideas that you've mentioned, one is perhaps to, with the HOA, to distribute among new owners a heightened awareness level, either through the dissemination of publications or brochure materials, that, or even awareness in that process, and I'm not saying exactly how it could be done, but I think we could do that, to it that they would be, become aware of the San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan, become aware of its unique history, become aware, it's first in America, it's the very first, and perhaps, I think, I've even heard in the world, where there was this type of a management plan placed there, and we all admire and appreciate that, and I think that's, that's a great idea. Another thing, as you mentioned, native plants, that is always the best way to go, and we would actually welcome that, that be perhaps even an enhanced condition in the future landscape and community plan, that native plants be used to the extent possible, often with trees, there's a requirement to have shade trees, and that's not a native plant, so, but to the extent possible. and that's not a native plant. So, but to the extent possible, native plant communities. There's an excellent nursery, just in Colma, in fact, that produces a lot of that. There's another one down by Portola Valley, great Californian Native Plant Society, one in Woodside. And I've just been told that San Bruno Mountain Watch has their own nursery. And would love to take advantage of their facilities, and what they produce, and their efforts. I think, let's see, you mentioned something about access for, not fire, you mentioned something about fire lessening the fire. What was it in regards that you were-
Oh, no, just, just, you know, to keep in mind that, you know, that the stress of the, where we're currently in, that we only have 15 firefighters.
I'm sure, yeah.
So that the density, and then, and the surrounding areas of like, as we know, Southern Hills, Bay Shore, his, Mr. Edelman's area, that this, this is, any kind of development affects, it's an impact, right?
Yes.
Whether they consider it significant, or slight, or however the wording is.
Yes.
So I know you're doing the best that you can to try to make sure you fit in to the area. And one more suggestion, which I thought, and now that way I can leave you alone, is the propane. I got this suggestion from another person, that they use, suggested in their, their C C N Rs, or suggestion for propane, because of the open fire of the grill, because of the area itself, and the density itself. If that's something that they would consider. I know you can't tell everybody what to use, but some areas do.
Well, that could be included in the C C N Rs.
Yes, I think that would be-
It's very much a standard provision these days.
Yes, yeah.
And then, is it, is it the insurance rate itself?
Yeah. The insurance companies do not like issuing master policies when there're charcoal briquettes involved.
And something to lessen the fire, the stress on fire, and the-
And it costs the, yeah, it costs the person less money insurance-wise.
Yeah. And combined with your earlier interest in lessening the stress on the reduced staff levels, which we all are aware of in Daly City, and that is that the exteriors of these buildings, we will, will be highly articulated, and there'll be many different varying types of exteriors, but they can all be cementitious in nature, even though there's wood paneling, the wood paneling, we're aware of that, stucco, and a combination of them, that is both aesthetically appealing, and yet reduces the fire. When you have a stucco, the difference between a stucco and a wood shingle is just, we all know what the difference is. So, yeah, we would certainly-
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Beaumont, just to follow up from Ms. Giovanni, Giovanni. Being a retired person from Daly City, and I know past Chief McDonald, Adonelson, the North County Fire Association has increased protection tremendously. So the idea of just, so that the people watching, the number of 15 is a number, but when you expand it over North County, the protection is really increased, better release, and, and very productive. As far as the police department, as I see here, and Station 93 is .4 miles southeast of the project.
You can walk there.
Yes. So we, we want to get everybody happy that we are well protected with our fire department. I've been on board before, when North County was first suggested, and all of a sudden, it has proven to be a blessing. Similarly, with the fire, the police department, with comm center being moved to the county, as a resident, I find the response 100% better. So we have covered that. One question I have is during this great 100-year rain we had, were you able to go to the area, the site, and check what was, what is the water saturation? You know, was it a good time, because we were droughted seven years, so everything was dry?
Yes.
And we know we have 170 inches of snow still up in the mountains. So did you, was there a chance or time to go see, are we having an effect, is there any effect sublevel with all the rain? Was there anything done?
That has been done, not just, and it's a great idea, and I have actually done that multiple times, three times I call it mine. The first time was last year, after there had been, remember the year before, it was so very dry. And the first rain, it was the second rain, it was, the first rain was sort of a starter one, and then a starter model. The second rain was tremendous. That was, I remember it because it was an inch and a half in one hour. It was a tremendous amount of rain. I was the crazy guy that actually went to the site, and actually went, because we had just been working with our civiles, and I was concerned about some aspects about that. Are we prepared? Because this is just going to be pure runoff. And I was expecting to see a giant jet of water coming out. And I was, I was shocked. I actually hung around and came back a couple of hours, and I followed up the next, following afternoon. And so I've, I've done that, I've been doing that, and of course, I've done that together as well.
Good. This is because we're in a particular situation, where something's happened. Now, the next thing, you have the alleyways behind the structures, right? 20 feet wide?
Uh, lanes, correct.
Lanes, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I'm an East Coast person, we call them alleys.
Sure, sure.
So are they wide enough for a fire truck to get through in case? Okay.
We've had all of the, well, the last two chiefs, and in fire prevention, those are the ones who pay attention to these matters.
Because nobody's going to park there, right?
No, no, no. There is no parking at all. Those are redlined areas, a red, red curb, rather, areas. And most of those have parking inset, and the ones that don't are going to be deeded that. We're also going to be exploring this together, not just explore, we've discussed this with staff. Anything that would be not a parking length, we would actually bring it so that it's clear that nobody tries to do a parking. That's one of the worst experiences many HOAs have, with an eight-foot parking, and you've got an eight-foot sticking out, fire truck comes by.
Well, Chairman Crump lives in the Association, the homeowners' association. We can pass all these rules, but enforcement is the key.
True.
I mean, I live in Daly City, I live in East Mark, in East Mulkey. I've got violations constantly.
Oh, boy.
So, and the future, so the nice plant that I see here, I really think it's great.
Charlie Vito.
Okay, very good, thank you. I appreciate your work.
I believe Howard's organization does the same thing as well. They're-
I want to thank you for some deep study on this. It's very good.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. As I open the public hearing, I would like to remind anyone who may have come in a little later, if you wish to address the commission on this issue, if you would fill out a speaker's card that are available at the door, hand them to staff, who will get them to me. First off, Zhenia Gatkowski.
No, I just want to go first.
You're, oh, come on, you're the premier. You will set the tone, Zhenia.
Oh, no.
Thank you for letting me speak. I have a question, which may be outside of this planning thing. Does Daly City still own some property at Martin Street and Carter, where they were dumping big boulders and stuff? Is that still your property? Okay. That could be developed?
That particular site is a housing asset, so it can be developed in the future for housing.
Yeah, great.
We would love to be able to develop it.
Yeah, I'm sure you would. Okay. My basic reason for coming here tonight was because of the parking and Carter Street impact. It's going to be horrendous. We have, I know you're planning it. I know you guys are doing well. I'm like 80% sold on the whole project. But we have one through six traffic analysis, four of which were Carter Street impacted. Okay? So there's a percentage there that's more than half. Okay. The next thing is that we have, my train of thought just went away. We have a lot of traffic on, on Carter Street. We have that corner where it's beyond your control, because it's San Francisco. And they're bringing in buses, that's, they're right. They're also putting stuff for storage. I don't care. The next part, that's the biggest problem that I'm seeing lately, and I objected to it, and I got no response from the city about it, is the racetrack drive-in, which is now being used for storage of something, cars, for dealerships. And we were told that that was stopped, or not allowed to go forward, or whatever. But there's still crap happening down there. And I'm seeing big trailer trucks going in, they, between what's going on with that little part of San Francisco and Carter Street. And the drive-in, we've got a lot of commercial traffic right there. And Carter Street's a big thoroughfare.
It is.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Zhenia. Next is May Swanbeck.
Nobody usually picks us together.
I probably should tell you off, right off the bat, I'm also one of the directors of the Bay Shore Sanitary District. And I say that only so that you will understand that I have seen this project in, going on for a number of years. I applaud it, I'm 100% behind it. I thank the developers for keeping both Saddleback and Bay Shore informed of everything that's happening. I'm well aware that California swims in red ink. I won't go into the trillions of dollars that Calpan, Calpan's earned, let's try again, that's owed by some of the entitlements that San Fran, that California, San Francisco, and the big cities have evolved. I understand that homeownership is a tax base that brings in taxes, which California definitely needs, but it's not going to solve its problems that way, and it's not going to solve its problems by putting them on developers. I wanted to take some of the comments that were made here, because one was on geology. I'm an amateur archaeologist, and have noted for years the geology of this area, which is very wacky. It is not substantial, it is not like granite. And had San Francisco stone ridge developers gone into literally what they were looking at, they would not have had the problem. And you're smiling, you know what I'm talking about. These folks did understand the problem, researched it, so they're not going to have the same problem. Again, sustainability, green building materials, that's lovely political speak right now. I come from the country, and from a country area in New York State. I love the country, I love things that are natural, but I also understand the politics that are wrapped around making something salable. And if you're going to look at something that's going to exist 10 years from now, it can't be with green building materials. It'll probably be something different. That technology is just beginning to show now. I applaud what you're doing. You're not, you don't have an easy choice. You really don't. This land is not the most attractive land to develop, but it has to be.
Thank you. You two must have very interesting Sunday morning over coffee conversations.
You're invited.
Howard Edelman. Welcome, Howard. Good to see you.
Welcome back.
I'm Howard Edelman. I'm president of Summit Ridge at Saddle Mountain. We also would like to see this development move forward. The developer, David Beaumont, has spoken with our associations on several occasions, presented preliminary drawings for the plans, and asked for our input, which we felt was very important for us to like what we see, because we'll be living next to it. You always want to like your neighbors if you can. Also, there was a lot of thought that was put into the development of the streets that were contiguous with Summit Ridge, which is very important, because traffic will be a problem. And we think that it was well thought out. Our biggest concern, which is something that we would like the planning commission to address, is the increased traffic on Carter Street.
Yeah.
Because it is only a two-lane road, and along some of the other areas, like the, is it Mercy Housing it's called?
Right.
At the bottom. There is such a problem with, and I'm not sure if all of that, or part of that, is in Daly City or San Francisco, but there is such a problem with double parking. And with Carter Street being a two-lane street with a double yellow line in the middle of it, it's impassable much of the time. And so we would like to see some sort of plan to widen Carter Street, at least, if not at this point, included with the future developments, so that there is a plan for Carter Street to be widened, and to allow for better traffic flow. Because that's our biggest concern, is safety, and of pedestrians walking down Carter Street to get to the bus, which a lot of our residents do. But as far as the plan itself goes, we think it's sound, we like the, the density variation between larger lots and smaller lots. And so there's a lot of support from our association.
Thank you, Howard. Del Sambari.
Good evening, commission and staff. I represent San Bruno Mountain Watch, and we're, you know, average C group for San Bruno Mountain. Got a couple of points. One is, we'd like to, I guess we're going to have to disagree a little bit with the representative. We'd like to see a trail up towards the summit and the ridge somehow. I guess we'll have to look into that. One of our biggest concerns, we feel the footprint's too big. We wonder if there's a way to like, make more, more units in the smaller area, and like, keep more of the footprint open, although we do appreciate what, what they have done so far. I also agree, of course, we also agree that there should be native planning on the site, since we have a greenhouse, and we grow plants, install them to the public, and condo associations, and so forth. I just want to let you know, there was something in the, in the E I R. that said, like, there's no animal corridor because of the gorse up there. Like, the county and McKesson and Corporation in San Bruno Mountain are working to remove the gorse, I think. And if not McKesson, then we're going to work with the county to try and get rid of that in the long run. And this, I guess, this, this development has nothing to do with the point with the Martin School District, but like, just to let you know that one of our, one of our projects is to teach ecology to kids at the, at the school level. And we do that, and they're moving Martin School this way, and there's going to be another development there eventually. So we'd like to plug in this development through the homeowners' association, to, to get kids in, into doing that. Now, do I get another two minutes for my name? Because that was San Bruno Mountain.
No.
I can't mention that I would like-
We'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay. Personally, we would like to see photovoltaics on here, and hot water heaters on the roofs, in order to reduce our carbon footprint. And, and I have to disagree with this later here. I, I think that we should have green building materials as much as possible in construction. So thank you.
Thank you, Del.
Thank you.
Daniel Sun.
Concrete. I'm located on Oakwood Street, directly overlooking this subdivision. I like to see this subdivision to be developed. And I think the amount of housing compared with the open space ratio, I think is reasonable. And I can envision free benefits for this amount of density. First of all, it will bring prosperity into the area. And secondly, it will support the funding for the developer, and encourage for the better use, development of the open space for better use, and also improvement of the open space for safety. And I also see there will be more tax avenue benefit for the city. I think I support this development. And I encourage to have this development go in as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt the findings as outlined herein?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to recommend that the city council improve the environmental review Secua 1015 11782?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Pam, did you have anything, or any commissioner have anything that they wanted to amend the conditions of approval? conditions of approval?
Um, yeah, thank you, through the chair, just if it's applicable now to add the, on the conditions, the native plants, and then also in the mitigation for the homeowners to be required to adopt a native vegetation management plan. And if so, approved the, the use of the propane grill in the C C and Rs. I think that's it, all right.
Do we have a motion to approve the amendments?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I need a roll call, or will a voice vote do?
We need a roll call.
May I have a roll call, please?
Talarico?
Yes.
Dee Giovanni?
Yes.
Das Magua?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes. Then, may I have a motion to recommend that the city council approve the general plan amendment, the plan development, and the major subdivision, subject to the conditions of approval as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Voice vote, please.
I think we did it already.
To the chair, I, I thought you had already done that.
We did it already.
Yeah.
No, that was for the amendment.
That was for the amendment.
It was adopting, recommending the conditions of approval as amended, so we can take another roll call, Walter, if you prefer.
No, unnecessary.
I think it was a five to zero vote.
Oh, thank you, Kelly, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Very much.
You're on top of it.
All right, we still have one item involved. Mr. Satori, would you like to take your five minutes and read the minutes?
No, I think I'll just pass it, just in deference to the mayor here. Thank you very much.
Uh, then do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Motion to approve.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Very good, do we have any public appearance, staff communications, acquisitions, vacations? I would then entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.